So we want, that's still better than home.
We kind of wait for it to tell us about that before we give an update. But it's pretty cool. I'm pretty excited about it.
What do we got here? Oh, okay. I wonder if it's the same one the Republican Party has been pushing around and trying to get.
I know, because it predates.
Oh, really? They've had it so long. Okay. Okay. So it isn't a spur of the moment thing. Because the Republicans have been pushing. What is this? Oh, a housing toolkit? Well, I already got their report. Hey, Bob. Pretty good, pretty good.
Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners. This meeting is now called to order. If Commissioners, staff, and guests would please stand for invocation and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us and our, and our community. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you, bless us, guide us in all that we do, and bless those that work alongside us. Let us be particularly mindful of the joyous season that we are in and continue to make us aware of the gift of, of Jesus and all that he represents. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Carlton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Doster. Getty. Hatfield.
Here.
Smelker.
Here.
Tunison.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of written agenda at this time, any member of the board or public may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request, does any Commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such requests, the agenda is approved as written. Reports from state and county officers. Do we have any state and county officers who would wish to present an update to the board? Morning, Dar.
Good morning, how are you? Merry Christmas to everybody, too. Off to my, well, you want to stand up for me? This is one of our newer posse members, she's observing, so we can release her from probation. This is a posse member, Henny, she's also USMC. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, well, glad to have her aboard.
Okay. So she's observing, so we can.
You got a good one now.
All right. Yeah, I don't know, no, this is unreliable over here, so. Anyways, I thought I'd introduce her to her, and I'll give a report next time I have it in my hands, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional reports from state or county officers. Hearing none, limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning, Joel Iverson, Rutland Township. I want to start off by thanking my Commissioner, Bob Tunison, for representing the county the way that myself and many others believe should be represented at the Berry Eaton District Health Department meeting. He voted no on two items that did not represent, that did not service Berry County the same way that it did Eaton, and I really thank him for that. I also thank him for bringing up the issue of the oath of office as well, and I made sure he's loaded for bear for the next meeting if he so desires. As far as our health officer, Ms. Colette Scrimger, who seven Eaton County Commissioners have called a liar. There were multiple institutions who defied the Governor's executive orders during COVID. Colette Scrimger issued multiple letters demanding cease of operations to institutions and businesses, but not to the one institution who happened to employ the chairperson at the time for the Board of Commissioners. Why would this be? One can only suspect that she was more concerned about her own economic well-being than the alleged threats to our children's safety. The optics are not good, and to this day, I've not been given anything close to a reasonable argument to imply that she was concerned more about children than she was her paycheck and employment status. Even with the added $600 a month unemployment bonus, it wouldn't touch her six-figure pay. Allegedly, we have a Fourteenth Amendment, which states we all have equal protection under the law. Unless, of course, you live within the Berry Eaton District Health Department, then I suppose that an organization might have extra protection if it employs someone that might cut Colette's pay. Colette Scrimger is a liar.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rich Temke, Director of Berry County Community Mental Health, and I have with me this morning Krista, who's our new outreach specialist, and so her sole purpose is to get the word out about Berry County Community Mental Health. So I'm gonna probably pass out some information that she has and let her introduce herself.
Yeah. Awesome. I'm Krista Wetzel, born and raised here in Hastings, and I, for the last 10 years, have been working in Lowell and Lake Odessa. And in October, I joined the team at Berry County Community Mental Health. So I'm excited to be serving my hometown and definitely want to be a connector to the people that need our services and our agency. I believe wholeheartedly that good mental health is essential for everyone in this community, and whatever we can do to help, I want to be a part of that. And I'll tell you, I've had the awesome privilege of shadowing a good majority of our staff, and I am blown away at the in-depth services that we provide and just the care and concern and time that's put into every single client that serves. So I can give my affirmation that I believe in, in this agency, and they are doing excellent changes. Just seen some amazing intentionality being brought to the agency. So excited to serve, and if there's anything I can do for the public, please let me know. Thank you.
Welcome, Krista.
So if you have, like, if you're a member of certain clubs or any type of groups that you have, or township meetings, if you want Krista to come and let them know what we're doing, then just contact our office and we're getting involved with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely, you, too. Additional public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. Merry Christmas to you, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays. Dan Patton, Berry County Parks. Just want to give everybody a quick update on where we are with our trail project. It's the end of the year, so just trying to keep you folks informed. We've completed all the survey work and, and design and engineering requirements for the trail project. Our goal right now is to get that put out to bid, hopefully first or second week of January. We'll see how those bids come back. You know, I could stand up here and go down that rabbit hole of cost indices, and, and you all hear it every week, right? There's some concern, obviously, with just some of the preliminary cost, construction cost estimates that we've done. We're probably gonna be struggling to do everything we originally proposed, but ultimately, let's wait and see where the bids come back, and then we'll kind of reevaluate and go from there. So just an update for you folks and try to answer any quick questions if you have any.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Morning, Dan.
Morning, Mike.
So the trail is gonna go from, like, what street to what street?
So right now, it's three sections. 108th Street to Stimson Road in the north, northwest part of the county. Well, we're calling the Thornapple Manor section runs basically along the Thornapple Manor campus and behind Berry County Christian to Thornapple Drive. And then the last section is from Curtis Road coming back to the west up to, it'd be Section 37 there in, in the township.
Would that be about to the school?
Yes, it would be.
About to there?
Yeah, so I, obviously, you know, the MDOT project going back a couple of years ago now. When they redid the bridge there in Nashville, part of that, Berry County Parks worked with MDOT to get that section paved from M66 to that crossing for Fuller Street Elementary. And, and our goal is to try to connect, for certain, connect from Curtis Road to M66. And because we know kids are already walking that and, and trying to make that a little safer through there. And this, you know, it's requiring some work with the, the veterans, the American Legion Post there in Nashville, or VFW, sorry, misspoke, VFW. We're gonna try and do some work for them, you know, they put up that memorial and, and that pavilion there on their property. And our trail is gonna be just adjacent to that. So we're trying to work with them to create some, maybe some better parking right there for both the users of the trail system, and again, just to make things easier to get in and out of Nashville and in support of what Nashville is trying to do along that M66 corridor, excuse me. But ultimately, that's the goal. We know, again, we know people are already using that section, and so we're trying to get as, as much done as we can.
Yeah, that is exciting. Twenty-five years ago, when I was on Nashville Village Council, we tried to get this kind of a project going, and that's when I received my first political tarn feathering. The first of many, by the way. And this is exciting to finally, 25 years later, to see this come to fruition, so thank you very much for what you're doing.
That was long before I was around. Any other questions? If not, for those of you like myself that are still trying to get on the nice list, you got about six days. So go ahead.
Thank you, Dan. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. Various correspondents, does any Commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? Hearing none, consent agenda. Commissioner Smelker.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the December 12th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting minutes.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smelker, supported by Hatfield, for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed. A roll call vote is required. Those in favor vote aye, opposed vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Items for consideration, Commissioner Getty.
I move for the approval to authorize the county administrator to approve claims on December 26, 2023.
Is there support?
Support.
Campbell. Motion by Getty, support by Campbell, for approval to authorize the county administrator to approve claims on December 26, 2023. Discussion.
Do we usually have a dollar amount with that, or have I just imagined that?
It isn't here yet.
Oh, it isn't here yet? Oh.
That is the process, that because we're not having another BOC at the end of the year, that we're preapproving that for him. So additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of Budget Amendment 23-C.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Getty, support by Hatfield, for, for approval of Budget Amendment 23-C. Discussion. Michael, do you want to go into any detail on this?
I'm happy to, if you'd like. It is a fairly minor, in the grand scheme of things, budget amendment, just clear, clean some things up before the end of the year. I tried to, in the description of action, be fairly detailed in, in what it does. You'll see that for the general fund, it increases expenditures by just shy of $52,000 and increases revenue by just a little over $53,000. And then there are a few special revenue and other fund amendments that on Pages nine, 10, and 11. And again, it's, it's really, to, so that as we look to the audit, we have budgets that, if there were some areas that might have gone over, we've cleaned those up. So again, I'd be happy if you'd like me to walk through line by line or page by page to do that.
It's what we do every year. End of the, end of the year budget amendment, clean things up, balance things out, so.
It is.
Questions for Michael? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Michael.
I would just make a note, Commissioner, to your comment about the claims.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I will review those, and then they'll get processed and paid, and then we'll bring the actual report back to the board, so you'll get an opportunity. Of course, they'll have been paid, but you'll get an opportunity to see what was, was approved, if you may. So you're kind of concerned that, and we have no clue what we're, otherwise, we, we wouldn't, we'd miss a cycle and, and bills would be delayed, so.
Very good, thank you, Michael.
But a good, valid question, if you hadn't been through it, so.
Unfinished business, we have none, new business, we have none. County administrators' report?
I'm all set, thank you.
Chairperson's report? I am all set as well. Vice Chair report?
I am all set as well.
Commissioner reports. Commissioner Tunison.
I attended all three townships last week. They're wrapping up the year, and they all seem very excited about next year, going to election year. It's gonna be a big, a lot of changes in all the townships. A lot of the clerks and supervisors are not gonna rerun, so there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of change at townships in my area anyways. Interesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Attended Health Department meeting, and also our, we have a clerk leaving in Assyria Township, so, yeah, a lot of clerks moving around.
Commissioner, Commissioner Smelker.
Attended Transit and 911 yesterday, have Irving tonight.
Commissioner Getty.
I attended Parks, but Dan stole all my thunder. We are really excited to see the bids go out and that project move forward. I think it's gonna be a game changer for Nashville, for sure, and to be able to connect that trail system through downtown and through the neighborhoods in the Village of Nashville. But also encourage that Eaton County is going to work on their section immediately to the northeast of the Village of Nashville, which would be the final piece to connect Nashville and Vermontville. So they passed a park village in the last election two years ago, and so that is providing funding for these countywide park, park projects like they want to do in Eaton, so super exciting. I also attended Yankee Springs Township. They were awarded a grant through the Passport Program, through the DNR, for over $100,000 for park improvements to their township park, focused heavily on accessibility, improving accessibility within the park, creating a full-court basketball, fully accessible basketball court. They have wheelchair basketball that's played there in the, in that park on a regular basis.
Wow.
And, and pickleball as well. And even though there's quite a pickleball facility at Curly Cone, our courts in Yankee Springs are used all the time as well. So I know Nashville is getting some pickleball courts, too, but it's nice to see these park improvements around the county.
Absolutely. Commissioner Carlton.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Doster.
The SWB boards that I serve on are going to have a strategic planning session in lieu of one of their board meetings, four board members, to kind of map out what their plans are for the year and going forward, and be able to have kind of uninterrupted. are for the year and going forward, and be able to have kind of uninterrupted discussions. I wonder if that's something that this board would entertain at some point. I don't know exactly how it works, because I don't recall this board really doing something like that before, but it's just a thought to throw out there.
Awesome. Thank you. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Joel Ivicen, Rutland Township. One of the quicker meetings as of late. One of the reasons why I am hammering on the Health Department is because you can study history and find that governmental units can become the inverse of their intent. In France, there were 40,000 people killed with a guillotine, and that was done so by the Committee of Public Safety. So when it comes to the Health Department, especially when we see the Health Department dabbling and recommending and endorsing practices that are demonstrably bad for your health, where does this stop? You know, and I don't think it will until we put a stop to it. I would personally like to see, as you guys all know, a split of the Health Department from Eaton County, and then we could adopt a minimalist approach like Ionia does with theirs. No, I'm not advocating joining with Ionia. I want Berry County to be run by Berry County, and done so in a way that they are held accountable for their actions, both good and bad. Couple other things I'd really like to see this board discuss. As I mentioned last meeting, we lost one of our longtime deputies to another police agency because we are completely out of line with all the surrounding counties and agencies around us when it comes to retirement age and pay. If you guys could please, please, please put this on an agenda and discuss that. It wouldn't be difficult to put together an ad hoc committee, research the rest of the counties, and see what they're all paying. We are paying exceptionally low compared to everyone else. And again, 59 and a half, does that sound like a good retirement age for deputies? Because to me, it doesn't. And then, as for those of you who go out and represent us, especially in the Berry Eaton District Health Department meetings, I just want to let you know something I've learned over time. It isn't difficult to say what's right. It's uncomfortable. And once you get past being uncomfortable, you realize it's quite easy to say, hey, and like Mr. Tunison did, this does not reflect what Berry County expects to see out of a joint intergovernmental agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Looking at you, Sharon. Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster?
I just wanted to comment on, or just a perusal of this housing toolkit that the Berry Community Foundation's provided the board. I noticed that Dalton, both Dalton and Hickory Corners are anticipated to have quite a large decrease in their population over the next 10 years. I think Dalton was, it's estimated at 39% decrease, and Hickory Corners at 50% decrease. And I presume that it's because the median age for both of those areas is like 60 and 62 and a half, and they just don't expect that, you know, that there's going to be a significant number of people that pass away. And yet, the housing demand for the 10 years, I don't quite understand this, they have, that the, will increase eight to nine percent for those two areas, but it doesn't seem to correlate with the population expectations. I'm just not sure how that works, but.
Yeah, I see that. It's gotta be a misprint or something.
The, I mean, just a little insight, I mean, they have a program called Revitalize Dalton, a community-based organization. They've done some studies on this, and I'm not sure how that all feeds in. One of the issues, when my daughter graduated 10 years ago, I think there was 100-plus students in the graduating class. That's down to half of that. A lot of that area is populated by lakes. Those, a lot of the lakes have been sold to people from out of state, so the school population has continued to decrease, and housing has become unaffordable in those areas for a lot of families. So there is a push to certainly increase housing. The Water Tower that this board approved with some ARPA funds almost a couple of years ago now is gonna be a big push in there, and we think that that may help change that around. So we'll see what Revitalize Dalton does, but I know there's also movements as such, you know, with Nashville and some other places as well, where they're concerned about population and how to really turn the schools around and bring people back into the area. And with no housing, being a lake community, it's been very tough, but I think they've got a lot of good ideas moving forward, so we'll see how that progresses. And they have meetings about every month, month and a half, so I can keep you informed on when those are, if you want to sit in on one as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Getty?
Nothing.
Commissioner Smelker?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Tunison?
Not much, other than years gone by pretty fast. Learned a lot here. It's a privilege for me to be sitting here next to every one of you, and I appreciate all your hard work. There's not a lot of people out there that could ever outwork a lot of these people on this board and what they do for the communities and their townships. So I've learned that real quick, that if you're gonna be sitting here, you better be willing to put a lot of time in, because it takes a lot of time to do it right. And I feel everybody here does it right. They really work hard. A lot of people gonna outwork Catherine Getty, John Smelker, Chairman, right down the line, all of us. So I appreciate you guys, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I'd just like to say to everybody to try to take a few days off of all the pressures we have through the year and enjoy our holidays and be nice to one another.
Commissioner Hatfield?
Amen.
Just a few thoughts, kind of echoing Commissioner Tunison's thoughts. We had four new Commissioners come in this year. So you guys have done an outstanding job. You've been involved in your community. Your service has been above and beyond what we would have expected, and that's part of what we need, is we need ambassadors from this board reaching out and knowing what they need in the community. So I know, Mike, you've had a lot of experience, both here as a board chair, as a state rep, and back, so we appreciate your leadership. Mark, some of the stuff you've done, especially finding, what, $350,000 in SWB funds that have come back to Berry County and utilized, that's been great. Catherine's a former Chamber Champion and an advocate for parks and rec as well as Blue Zones. John, I don't know what to say about you other than you are the voice.
Been here a long time.
We, we know when John is unhappy with something. So John is the one that I never have to wonder where he stands, because he will let me know before I'm thinking about it. I'll know where John is. So I always appreciate his candor. But Bob, to see you work in the community, to see the relationships that you've built and how you've been a great ambassador coming in as a new Commissioner, fantastic. I mean, Bruce, a post commander, I guess, like I've often told people, if you still lived in Dalton, I wouldn't be a Commissioner, because this guy is a rock star in that area. And any place he goes, people know that he goes above and beyond to service community. And David, with your experience on boards and leadership, there couldn't be a better vice chair as far as leading and helping out this community. You've been a phenomenal ambassador for the City of Hastings. That's a position that we've needed for a long time. So to see how we've taken a brand-new board and blended it together into a really good working unit to do good things for the county, just very impressed with all of you. So thank you for your service, because I remember eight or nine years ago when I took this position, and they said it was gonna take five or 10 hours a week, and I'm like, well, I could do that. And then I found out what it really takes. And it's not five or 10 hours.
They didn't tell you the truth.
Yeah, they didn't tell me the truth. So, yeah.
For a reason.
So it takes a lot more than that. So I know that you're all invested in a full-time, part-time position, and I really appreciate everything that you do. And Cindy, welcome.
Thank you.
You've got kind of put into a position where I don't know if you knew it was coming or not, but, you know, you've done an outstanding job as well, and you know that we're here to support you, especially during election season with all of the interesting things going on at our state level, that we need your leadership, and we're here to help as well. And Michael Brown and Luella and Pam and your staff, county maintains its AA credit rating. I mean, we see how the culture that you've created over the years has continued to produce very good results, financially, fiscally responsible departments. We've got, we got fantastic people working as department heads in leadership positions, and that's a result of your leadership and some of the guidance that you guys do. So there's not enough appreciation that moves upstairs to Michael and his staff for all they do. So, you know, we've, it's been very interesting to see all of those things. And to Mark's point, one of the notes that I wrote down was, as we start formulating a plan for next year, I'd appreciate it if you all take a minute to think about your area and the people you represent and the things that are, that are coming before you, and let's formulate a vision for what next year should look like. Let's, let's talk about some of those things. You can reach out with a phone call or an email, and certainly we can have a workshop or talk about some planning for next year. Usually, as I've talked to Michael on almost a weekly basis, there's usually somewhere between 12 to 15 things on my list of things to do that I'm thinking about all the time for the county. And it just seems to continue to grow. As we check one off, there's more things there. So, you know, just, I said, appreciate all you guys for what you do. It's, it is the holiday season, so think about others, think about the caring and the sharing and the love and the peace and the joy, and be the reason to make somebody else's day. Just be a smile, you know, be a smile in the community out there, so.
I think I speak for all of us when I say, you know, thank you for your very kind words, but most of all, we thank you for the leadership that you've provided.
I appreciate that.
That's one of the real turning points in how we've been able to become as effective as what we are. So we appreciate your wisdom, your patience.
Thank you.
You've been a great leader, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate you guys for showing up, some of the same faces every week, and we learn to speak into the microphone, so for some of us to help out. So for all of you that continue to support us, you have a great Christmas also. So thank you. We are adjourned.